All right, let's call the board. This is going to be City of Port Ritchie, City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 25th. At this time, I wanted to invite Pastor Lord for our invitation. Please stand.
Lord, we just thank you that we can come and have the honor to come before you in the name of Jesus to ask you to help us, Lord. We know we all need somebody greater than us, and you're the greatest, Lord. You created all things. And so, Lord, tonight, we thank of our committees, the boards, Lord God. We just pray that you would set those with people with hearts for our city, Lord God, and father our balanced policy, that all of that would be in order as it should, Lord. We thank you for the equipping of the police cars and the safety with those, Lord, with the cameras, radios, and all they need, Lord. And we just thank you for the working together of our fire department, Lord God, with the Pasco County Fire Department. Thank you, Lord. You've sent us a chief that's been there. And so, Lord, I just want to thank you for those that gather together here to make decisions. Lord, fill them with your wisdom and your knowledge. Lord, today said in the Scripture, "They were in one place and one accord." And, Lord, you showed up with your wind and your fire and did great things. So, Lord, may the presence of your wisdom just blow through here tonight. And we just thank you for the meeting and may the destiny of our city, which would be good in your eyes, Lord, may there be the protection over our first responders, the honor and the working together, Lord, with humility and service of all the workers. And, Lord, we just thank you to come to the time that our city would owe nobody anything, that we could be a city that would be outstanding, Lord, and good record. So, we thank you for purifying our hearts and giving us the love, most of all, for you and one another to stand for what's right. Thank you for tonight, in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we have substitute clerk for tonight.
Yes, thank you. I'll be doing the roll this evening. City Clerk Asher McDonough is absent.
And just put your name on the record so it's recorded.
Sal Aaron, Operations Manager, filling in for Asher McDonough, City Clerk.
Okay. Thank you for doing that. At this time, would you please, I do roll call?
Mayor Scott Tremblay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tom Consella.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell. Let the records show that Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell is absent from tonight's meeting. Councilman Tom McClary.
Here.
Councilwoman Linda Arbigas.
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager John Duke.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve at council minutes.
Motion to approve council minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to open up to comments from the general public. The first person I was going to call is Pastor Lord. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Just want to encourage y'all. Oftentimes, we forget that, you know, God's word is the sword of the Spirit. In our nation, we are in a spiritual battle of good and evil. And what we see, particularly in the book of Daniel, is those that stood up for what God said oftentimes were persecuted or, and that's where we find the fiery furnace in the lion's den. And so, I think all of us want to obey every law we can and love one another and do what's right, but when the law overstepped what God says, then it's our opportunity to stand up, that righteousness prevails in our city. And so, I know as me, as a person, when I first began to read the Scripture, I said, "You know, I'm not the husband I should be or the father. I'm pretty selfish." And at that point, I just decided the Scripture said if I'm trying to please people, I ought not to serve God, and that God wants me just to stand up for what's right and not go to the threats and the fears of other people. So, I just want to thank y'all for allowing us to work with you. And what will make this city great is God's wisdom and the presence of him. And so, thank you for what you do. And any way we can help let you know, let us know, and we're just praying for you. And God bless you. Thank you all, the police department, fire department, workers. We just thank you, appreciate you, and it's great to work in the city. Thank you, Mayor and City Manager, for all your help. And Lord bless you. It's an honor to serve with you. Thank you. Blessed.
Thank you, Pastor Lord.
Yes, sir.
The next person that I see that's signed up is Chet Jassik. Pleasure to see you. Welcome.
Hey, thank you. Chet Jassik, Miller Valley Drive. I just wanted to say about, I think I brought it up to Tom, where you come out of Walmart parking lot and you're facing Call for Restaurant, and you can't make a left turn there. All those dividers that make sure it all turns up are knocked over, and they're all over the place. It just looks messy there. I was wondering if there's any way you can get Walmart or even our city to pick up that mess there. It just looks terrible. That's it.
Thank you. I appreciate your input. That's all that's signed up, but I see several people here. So, anyone else who would like to speak? Show of hands, please. Seeing no hands, at this time, we're going to move on to comments from our city manager. I'm going to invite Mr. Duke to speak at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We checked with Treasury this week. No updates on the dredging project. Public Works continues to work on the leaks that were found in public property as a result of the smoke testing, making preliminary plans to pick another location in the city. We want to wait until we've made a little more progress on the leaks that we found before we go find some more, but that will be coming up fairly soon. As promised, the citywide cleanup will be March 7th through the 18th. The first week, March 7th through 11th, drop off is here at Public Works facility from 8:00 to 4:00. And March 14th through 18th, we'll do curb side pickup. If you want it picked up, it has to be out to the curb by the 17th. Our guys will go out and get it. This is for large items, furniture, appliances, scrap metal. No hazmat, no tires, no concrete, no paints, oils. The county has places for those. Proof of residency is required if you're bringing items here to the Public Works facility. So, that information's up on the website and on Facebook, but just as promised two weeks ago, I wanted to let you know as of now. Couple of things here at City Hall. We've started to roll out our iWorks software. iWorks is working with city staff to get them trained in how that functions and in the process of uploading city digital information, maps, pictures, all kinds of stuff that will go into that software system. So, that'll take some time, but I think the end of February is our deadline to have that up and running for all city functions. So, that's in progress. I did go out and meet with a couple of residents up on Weber Street. We were doing some work out there on stormwater, and they had some additional concerns. So, spent a little bit of time with a couple of different residents there and got some of the stormwater drainage issues, infrastructure issues fixed. It's a short street. We go out and take a look at our new culvert and overpass. It looks pretty good. I did have the honor of attending the Fire Department's new employee swearing-in ceremony, and I appreciate those folks joining the floor. So, that's all I have. Stand for your questions.
I'm going to start with Councilwoman Rodriguez. Anything?
I'm good right now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McClary?
Is there any word on the upgrades for the AV system?
In progress, but I'm going to ask Sal if he's got any additional information.
Unfortunately, he's been out due to COVID and, you know, members of his family. He did inform me though, he did send me the quotes, the final quote that I needed for the TVs that we also discussed, that'll be going in front of the city manager tomorrow. And then, he had to, because we changed the microphones that we're going to want instead of the one in the ceiling, we're going to do the six around the guys here. He asked to order those, so he's waiting on that. But I have been in touch with him, and we're going to be starting very soon.
Sorry. Thank you. Vice Mayor? Okay. All right, that's, I think, all that we have for comments from Mr. Duke. We're going to open up comments from myself and the board. I was going to start just briefly. The weather's been pretty rough here lately. I know that a week ago, we had some flood warnings where we had the storm pushing the water up combined with the tidal issues. So, it looked like we were set to potentially flood fairly seriously. At the time, I just wanted to commend city staff because I saw that there were flood warnings that were up on our website. There were references to emergency numbers, and I know that he last minute adjusted staff so we had staff pumping life stations and addressing other flooding concerns for our citizens. So, I wanted to thank the city for responding really well last minute to that potential emergency. So, I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Duke and the staff. That's all I had for comments. I was going to go to Vice Mayor Consella.
Nothing at this time. I have nothing. Thank you.
That closes out comments from the council. We're going to move on to boards and committees, but that's one of the items, so I think we'll address it with council business. At this time, I wanted to move on to the consent agenda, and I was looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Before we put it to a vote, I did have a question. I see some kind of large-ticket items from Home Depot and Lillis, and I just wanted to know what those were and if they were budgeted, if anyone knew.
That's the sewer. That's the sewer, if you can hear me, that we pay. So, that's for those locations, and that is budgeted, yes.
So, the 22-9-89-58 is the, that's a sewer?
Yeah. She didn't reference the pay date on that, so I'm not sure if that's for one month, but that typically is around the dollar amount per month.
Oh, I understand. So, they're county bills when we use their services?
Correct, yes.
Understood. Okay, that's all I had. I-
I have one question as well. The Black Mountain soft- The Black Mountain software, is that for this new upgrade or is that something else?
Black Mountain is our software system that gives us backup, gives us security. It's our cloud-based system.
Okay, so it runs the internet?
Yeah, it's not new. We've had that for years.
It's our annual voice for purchasing, accounting, building, all that.
Any further questions or comments? If not, let's put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move on to council business. The first item up is the appointment of members to boards and committees. For this particular item, I'm going to pass it to our Vice Mayor, Mr. Consella, to introduce this item.
Thank you. The Citizens Advisory Committee currently has two vacant positions. At the last committee meeting we had, two residents came forward requesting to be part of the committee. The committee interviewed them, very impressed with the two individuals, and with that, they made a recommendation for these two citizens to be approved as new members. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. John Hoover and also Mr. Chet Jassik. And we're making a recommendation to the council that these two members be approved for CAC.
Okay, I'm well open for discussion and/or motion. We've heard from, I think, Mr. Hoover recently, a very impressive resume, so, you know, I think he's a fantastic addition to that board and committee. And Mr. Jassik has been involved in the community in one fashion or another for a long time, and a long-time resident. So, I'm really happy to see involvement of some of our finer citizens here in the community. So, I'm certainly for that and looking for a motion, if anyone would make one.
Motion to approve John Eric Hoover and Chet Jassik to the Citizens Advisory Committee.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Welcome, and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to move on to the fund balance policy. That's item four, and I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The auditors in the 2020 audit recommended that the city adopt a fund balance policy. You can read through the details and justification there, but this did come from our auditors and want to thank Ms. Consell for putting this together. Would request a motion to approve.
And I remember this, this for discussion. I remember the auditor when he came. And why it's important is because we're getting ready to come into budget season. I know that the recommendation was 30% should be sitting in reserves for the general fund balance, which would be for our city, 1.9 million. We're currently at 21%, which is around 1.4 million. So, you know, one of the things that I think that we've worked towards in the last couple of years is to build those reserves to get to the 30%. And it's my understanding this year, I think we budgeted for around $300,000 or $400,000 extra for reserves to get closer to that amount, which at that pace would put us up to the 30% in the next year or two, correct? So, I certainly agree with that policy and that recommendation. So, I was very much in favor of passing this and looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the fund balance policy. Second.
We have a motion and a second. What I'm going to do before I open it back up to council and all address this, I just wanted to see if there was any commentary from the public, if anyone in the public wanted to comment on this particular item. Nobody signed up. Seeing no hands, I'm going to pass it to Mr. McClary before we put it to a vote.
The, within the policy, the emergency use of unassigned fund balance. Now, I know in the event of a city emergency, that gives the city manager powers to do expenditures based on an emergency basis. How does that interact with this emergency fund balance per se? Maybe I'm asking the wrong, asking the question incorrectly.
How does a policy affect the-
Yeah, so, let's say there's a, this city manager, we have a hurricane, whatever goes through. The city manager then is given the emergency powers to expend for whatever is required for the viability of the city at that point. This policy is, right now says, can only be used in the extent of city council approval. How does that work against an emergency, a declared emergency? And flip side, what protections do we have if the city manager does have that power to go below that fund balance? What's the check to that authority?
That question's probably going to go to Mr. Duke for explanation.
Well, there's an assumption of a declaration of emergency made by the mayor or the governor. But at that point, I have to go back to the code and actually read it.
Yeah, because you can actually declare the emergency, I believe. If I'm correct on-
For Mr. Steve. Mr. Matthews is going to clarify some of these points, I believe, here.
This is a policy, okay, not a rule. And the general purpose of this policy is to set forth the objectives and parameters for the classification and management of the fund balance, right? And this is there to force us to look at these things as we do things, as opposed to set whether you can do them or not, okay? So, the bottom line is if this doesn't affect any of the powers, I think there's emergency powers for the city manager to spend in excess of something without going out to bid, whether council gets involved. This has nothing to do with any of that. It's not going to affect any of that. Matter of fact, this doesn't say we can't do any of these things. It's just making us look at them. It doesn't mean we can't make the fund balance 20%. This isn't a rule that says it must be 30.
I understand.
Okay, so I'm saying, so that's why it doesn't apply. The other issues are rules we have, and this won't affect those rules. Sure, that's your question. This is just a policy to keep your, so that you look at them, you know, as you develop your budget. Is that the best way to explain what this is?
Yeah.
Rachel?
But we're confused, and I understand all of those elements, establishing the 30% goal and all of that stuff. But if you have the policy in place, it's essentially a rule. Right now, we have no such policy in place that a 30% fund balance must be adhered to. We have a policy in place that the city manager, in an event of emergency, declared emergency, can expend funds. We're running into a dichotomy that theoretically, our policy is limiting that the only people in this room who can go below that policy is the council. If he starts expending funds that go below that policy, we're essentially setting a policy that says we can violate our policy.
Policies aren't rules. It shall be the goal of the City of Port Ritchie to attempt to maintain an assigned fund balance of 30%. The fact that it has emergency powers to do that doesn't change that goal from a legal perspective.
I'm just trying to look at it.
This document has almost no legal authority, is the best way to explain it.
It's not a guideline, is it?
It's a guideline.
Okay, then I don't understand, you know, element six is basically what cued me to it, is then why are we saying, well, the council can, you know, go below that policy if there's no legally binding thing to this policy at all? I'm just trying to conceptualize it, and maybe I'm just overanalyzing it, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I mean, it's trying to establish the uses of unassigned fund balance and saying that an emergency purpose does not include wrongdoing, mutilatory, or mismanagement of funds, so.
But it's nonbinding, and we could theoretically violate it anyway if we wanted to.
Right. It's really guidelines.
It's more of a goal than a policy.
It is a goal, and you're not overthinking it. The point is, if you really wanted to give some teeth to it, you'd change the other rule, that it can only go so high or something, right?
Or go so low. You can't expand below the 30% as we explained.
This is the first year they came up with this, right? They must be getting more stringent at the auditor general's office.
Yeah.
And I'm all in favor of the policy. I just, you know, it's in the details portion of it.
Government Accounting Standards Board is what introduced this and wanted governments to put this policy through.
I think the idea is great. Don't get me wrong. I'm just trying to get past some of the details of it to actually give the policy perhaps more teeth. That's about all I have to say on that one.
So, we have a motion, a second. Any other further comment?
No.
All right, let's put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move on to item five, which is purchase of an in-car camera system for the 2022 police vehicles. And I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was budgeted, approved. It is over my spending limit, which is why it comes to you and is sole source because it, the purchase has to be compatible with the existing system that we have. And so, comes to you for final approval and request a motion to approve the purchase.
Motion to approve purchase of in-car camera system for the new patrol car.
Second. Before we put it to a vote, I just had a couple of simple questions. I was going to direct towards our chief. First of all, the in-car cameras. They've provided, I think, a lot of help in terms of not only protecting our police officers from certain civil liabilities that we have so far, but conviction rates. So, you know, obviously, a very good idea for our police department to have them, as most departments are either going to in-car cameras or body cameras, one of the two. That having been said, we ordered, I think, six of these either last year or the year before. Were the prices the same as we've been paying all along?
It's basically in the same ballpark. It could take a few dollars, but it's not a big difference.
Okay, and that was the most competitive price back then?
That's correct.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Thank you. With that, I was going to put it to a vote unless there's any further commentary. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item that we have would be the purchase of the in-car radios for the 2022 patrol vehicles. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very similar to the cameras, budgeted, approved, over my spending limit. Compatibility with the rest of our system is, with the county system is paramount here. So, would request a motion to approve.
Before we motion, it's the same question. These radios were ordered for the six cars last year. Is it the same price and same-
Yes.
-competitive price that we had originally?
That's correct.
Okay. That's the only question I have, looking for either motion or and/or discussion.
Motion to approve the purchase of in-car radios for our new patrol cars. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're going to move on to the discussion of the project list that has to do with ARPA funds, and I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This council requested a project list. Staff has spent a considerable amount of time. The list that you have starts on page 59 of your council packet. What we did was basically go through every piece of infrastructure we could think of and try to ascertain, particularly in the water sewer and stormwater areas, with focus on water and sewer. What projects do we need? What do we think they would cost? The costs are very rough. They're our best guess, our big staff best guess. We didn't put this out to engineers. We haven't done any pre-engineering, and so those are very loose numbers. But I asked the staff to, from their perspective, prioritize, and that's the red, yellow, green that you have on your lists, you know, which ones Ritchie and his staff think are in the worst shape and need to be replaced first. You've got the, kind of the justification, the existing is what do they look like right now? Why do these things need to be replaced? And why is this one red? Why is this one yellow? It's important to note on that first and second page, the first line is a local match for hazard mitigation grant. That's a local match for a FEMA grant that we have applied for. It's a $2.5 million grant. It's for water infrastructure, federal money that would, I believe, come through the state to the city. It requires a $600,000 match. With the final rule and with a lot of consultation with Mr. Matthew and Ms. Consell, it's our understanding of the final rule that ARPA funds are now eligible to be used as local match for federal grants. And so, my thought was in putting this together, and that's why you see asterisks under the possible funding source, all of those water projects, if we receive the FEMA grant, would be paid for by that FEMA grant with a $600,000 local match. If it, so please the council, because you would approve something like that, we would intend to use 600 of the 740 to make that local match and leverage that into $2.5 million. Now, there's several ifs in there. The biggest one is if it's awarded to us, if it's awarded in whole, could be awarded in part, could be not awarded at all. But I put that possible funding source as HMGP to recognize that we've asked the feds for money to do those things, and if they award it, and if you approve it, we spend the $600,000 as the local match. That immediately drops that down to 140 left over. But that, I kind of wanted to go through that so you have some idea of the thoughts that I had when I put the list together. There's several roads and sidewalks on the list. This is not a comprehensive list. I'm sure there are other roads, other sidewalks that need to be replaced, but I just wanted to, you know, kind of pick some of the worst, some of the ones we hear about day in and day out, and put them on the list. If we flip over to page 62, I think the last number on the last page of the list is one I wanted you to be aware of, too. We're going to have somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.4 million in ARPA money, and we've got at least $5 million worth of projects to consider, prioritize, to think about. Some of them maybe could be put off for several years with no impact to the city. Some of them should be done today. But I wanted to give you some idea of the- But I wanted to give you some idea of the infrastructure mountain that we have to climb. What I'm hoping for today, one is to give you an idea of the scope of our challenge, scope of the projects that staff have come up with. Like I said, we surveyed the community. I'm sure they have other projects that they want or, you know, the pothole in front of their street. So it's not a comprehensive list by any means. But I wanted you to have some idea and some opportunity to discuss. If it, you know, if there's something that jumps out at you as, man, that's not the way we want to go, then I need to know that before I start bringing you projects to approve. One of the things that we've also discussed and thought about with staff, the FEMA grant is likely to be awarded early fall this year. July, August, September, somewhere is kind of what Pam is hearing from the state and the feds. If that turns out to be the timeline, we may want to actually look at spending the $740,000 that we have sitting in the bank on something other than those water projects. Because come October, we're going to get the second half of the ARPA money, another $740,000. So presumably, if we're awarded the FEMA grant mid-fall, by the time we're ready to get started, by the time we need the match, we've got the next half of the ARPA funds on the way. So it's entirely possible that we can spend the $740,000 not on water projects. And by the time the grant is either awarded or not, we'll have the second $740,000. So that kind of house of cards, kind of stacking this up to try to figure out what we want to spend, when and where. I guess what I'm saying is that we don't have to wait until we hear about the grant to start spending the ARPA money that we have. We'll get that second half in October. If we're awarded the FEMA grant, we can then use that second half to make the match and continue forward. If we don't get the FEMA grant, we've got $1.4 million to spend on ARPA-approved projects, water, sewer, stormwater, and broadband are all on the list of approved activities for ARPA funds. So I was hoping for some discussion and guidance. If you think that's headed in the general direction, that's helpful. If we need to make a hard left turn somewhere or we need to add or subtract, I wanted to have a general discussion and get guidance.
If I can open the discussion, when I looked at the ARPA funds, I think there were two, just generally speaking, goals. One was to recover costs that we've already expended. And then also primarily, that's what it was for. And then moving forward, what can we use the costs on once we've recovered all the money we've already spent? I see that most of what we have here, including leveraging the money, which I think is a fantastic idea, is looking forward and not really addressing money that we've already spent. One of the concerns that I have about this city and one of the things I love about sitting in this particular chair with this city is we really don't owe any money to anybody other than some water bonds and I think what we left on the building. And we hadn't really borrowed any money since I've been sitting here except for one issue, and that was for a vector truck. That was, I think, right around a half million dollars that the city needed. And as I sit here, I still don't like having those seven years of payments on the vector truck. I've talked to city staff just to understand that contract. And one of the things that I believe we could use ARPA funds for are things that we've already expended money for and that we're contractually obligated for the next seven years. And I wanted to know how the council felt about paying off the vector trucks since we're already in contract, we're already obligated to spend that money. And ARPA money can certainly be used, I think, to purchase that item, which would then reduce our overall debt as a city. And that was one of the things that I wanted to talk about as a point of discussion. So what I was thinking about, kind of proposing, is that we pay the vector truck in part with part of the money that we received upfront, which we already have. And then when the second one comes in October, seeing if we can utilize that money to leverage the FEMA grant. Because I think leveraging that money to, especially in a small city, to double or triple what we can do, I think, is a smart use of that money. So I certainly am in favor of that. But what I wanted to talk about and see how everyone felt about was paying off the vector truck so we don't have that debt over the next seven years with the ARPA money. And I wanted to just kind of feel everybody out and see what the council thinks about that.
I like the idea of that second payment that we'll receive on the ARPA funds, applying that to this project. The only thing I want to know right now, is there any other pressing concerns, Mr. Duke, that the city has that possibly we could utilize to curb ARPA funds too?
Yeah, if you flip over to the list of sewer projects, there's a similar red, yellow, green identification there. And so if, you know, we were holding off on water projects in anticipation of a grant, possible grant, I'd want to start looking at those sewer projects and picking off a couple of those with the current funds that we have. One way or another, they're going to have to be addressed.
One of the other things I wanted to weigh in is I know that our city is moving forward, I think, with professional engineers to do a CIP and a rate study and all of that, which will address some of these issues. And one of the things I was kind of gun shy about also is coming in and addressing some of these issues before we have an expert come in and maybe tell us which projects, in their opinion, should be addressed first. And I really wanted to lean on some of the opinions of some of the experts as we get those experts in here to evaluate the system and decide the priority of how money should be spent as they set the rates as well. So that was one of the reasons I was gun shy about earmarking this money for these particular projects when we have experts, I think, that are set to come in to reevaluate the whole system and decide what needs we have, which is what you were talking about, versus what needs we can move down the road. So that's why I was a little gun shy. And I think it's a little premature if we're going to utilize some of the expert opinions before we earmark some of this money.
Well, we've had a couple incidents where we made headlines again because of the sewers. And we've been cited on a couple of these as well, correct? And were there fines attached to?
The chapel lift station issue was addressed. There was no fine attached to that. There was reporting that was done. EP was involved in inspecting and they did an onsite inspection. There were some remedial actions that we did take to improve that. So no fines, but that lift station would be included in the list. It's in need of assistance. The other thing to, at least on the sewer, the manhole lining, that is, all the manholes that need to be lined, I don't remember what the number is, but it's a bunch of them. That's not a single project that costs $400,000. That's a whole bunch of manholes that need to be rehabilitated. You could do one, you could do all of them. If you do all of them, our guess is it's 400,000, so. And I think the mayor mentioned recoverable costs. If I remember the number right, Rachel, we've got about $60,000 in COVID-related recoverable costs. I didn't put them on the list, but that is a figure that's out there and would be an appropriate ARPA expenditure.
Yes, of course. I just consulted with the finance director. There's a couple of perhaps misstatement, two things that are rather important. Firstly, the final rule, which is, you know, the final rules for spending the money. Under the final rule, before you were limited to certain categories and there were certain, if you could show certain losses that you resulted, it got from COVID. What happened there is they prepared the standard allocation, I guess is the word, of up to 10 million or the maximum we're getting. So, and that was done for small cities because doing the calculation to determine your loss was very complicated. However, however good for us is when the standard deduction or allocation came in, it changed some of the terms that now says that you don't now need to follow the four things that you can spend money on, such as reimbursing for wages. And the main thing was for the water department. Now you can spend it on any governmental service. Okay, am I getting that right? That's what's been written in front of you here on this paper. I researched that for several hours over time and I've been confirming that. So you can spend your money on roads and anything else. And okay, so it's not like, those four categories were down the water capital, but now it's not. So it's a different ballgame here. And number two is there is a couple of requirements that you can't spend the money on if you're taking the standard allowance, which I presume we'll do because it frees our hands, is debt service.
Okay.
Okay, here. And one last thing, just to get the bigger picture here. By selecting the standard allowance, you can use your ARPA award for providing governmental services up to the lesser of your total ARPA award or 10 million. Governmental services broadens the use of the funds and even includes the maintenance of roads. So you're really open here. A few items to be aware of that caps, caps do not qualify as governmental services are offsets to tax revenue, excess deposits to pension funds, contributions to reserves or rainy day funds, that would be our thirty percent, payments of settlements or judgments, payments for long-term or short-term debt. Okay, or any pre-existing federal statutes. So I've confirmed this. This is a accounting firm up in New York. I've confirmed it on several other levels here today and I've spoken with Ms. Goslin. One last thing so you can understand, which is an open issue to me. I think ninety percent of what's written in the next paragraph is still true. This was written about three weeks ago. Another major change in the final rule in comparison to the previous internal rules that the final rule allows for ARPA funds to be used as a non-federal match to other federal grants. That's what we're doing. So long as the allocated funds have been determined to be from the lost revenue provision. Now, not to get too legal with you, but I think that means the standard allowance, but I'm not sure yet. But most likely, so I'm still researching that. But we're not going to get to that matching grant, Mr. Duke, because we probably won't need that match till the next tranche is here. So we don't have to address it now. So that's what we're up to. So in terms of what you want to spend money on, it gives you a lot more latitude. So you can't, they're sorry, can't do what you want to do.
You can't buy the back truck.
Okay, I just referred that over there. And with regard to the other thing, you got a list here of many items. What you're spending on is now you're open.
Okay. It does. One of the things that I wanted to focus the money on, we're going to have a CIP plan for our actual water department with experts coming in to determine what should be fixed and set the rates. What I wanted to do is see if we could talk about some projects that will come out of our general fund balance so we don't have to raise taxes or we can, we can get some of those done, which will lessen the burden on some of our taxpayers moving forward. And I remember the last budget cycle, one of the things that came up were there were several road projects in terms of resurfacing roads, that we would have had to raise the village rate to resurface those roads. And that came up during the last budget discussion. I don't know if you guys recall. But I think that some of that money may be better spent out of projects that would generally come from our general fund pool of money as opposed to our utilities, you know, which is an enterprise fund altogether. So, you know, I didn't, not that I have any problems with any of these projects, but I wanted to know if we could look at maybe some projects that come out of our general fund. So moving forward, we don't have to tax the general public to get some of these things done.
Can I comment on the first conversation that we had before we started going on tangents? First of all, in terms of the back truck, I would actually be against paying off the back truck at all. You're going into a rising interest rate environment. You're not going to have three percent or four percent rates that we currently have on the back truck, probably in the foreseeable future. So right now you have a debt locked in at a fairly low interest rate to pay off that debt. And if you need the money down the road, you're now going to be paying feasibly a higher interest rate. So if we can lock in debt at a fairly low interest rate from a business perspective, that's a better way to spend our capital. One, it's already budgeted. We have it budgeted over the next seven years. It's a known expense. If we need the money down the road for the sewer blows up and we have to bond something out three years from now, we don't know what we're going to get in terms of interest rates based off of those bonds. So I would rather lock in the debt that we know we have at a fairly reasonable interest rate for our citizens that's already budgeted out and then deal with, you know, this influx of cash for stuff to offset future things that we would feasibly have to bond at a later date or incur debt at a later date for. So that's my feeling on the back truck portion, especially since it's already been approved, agreed, and done. And let's move on past that. In terms of the.
Can I comment on that before you finish?
And then you're more.
Just to that point, that's fine.
In terms of the, whether to use the first tranche of funds or the second tranche of funds for the water or whatever we choose to do, to me, it makes perfect sense to use the second tranche of funds for the grant down the road and see what we get awarded of the grant. Then we can more adequately analyze how we spend the ARPA funds. Because if we only get a million dollar grant, our match is probably only going to be 300,000. In which case, we can now then start to align and see what we're going to do the next part of the ARPA funds for, instead of waiting and holding and waiting until we, you know, see six months down the road and not spending and making any improvements now. In terms of the ARPA funds themselves, you know, I think starting to make improvements to our infrastructure, I see right here, you know, maybe perhaps hold off on the water stuff pending the response from the ARPA or from the upcoming grant. So we know what we're doing. But the sewer, again, prior to your ruling, was the only thing available to the ARPA funds. I know we have had a lot of trouble with our sewer over the past, you know, year, two years plus. Right now, all the stuff in red seems to be, you know, 800,000, 500,000 is covered by the impact fee, 300,000 is by the ARPA lot. I think that's a great opportunity to address a ton of our sewer issues throughout the city and actually show some benefit overall to the citizens. Now, I understand the argument for the experts, but I'll bet dollars to donuts that our people who work with the system every day probably know more than the experts do. Because I work with experts all the time on this. And they may tweak it here or there. They may add something from yellow to red or something of that nature. But we're going to get pretty close that my guess is our red stuff is probably going to remain red after whoever looks at it is going to look at it. And once we increase our, feasibly increase our sewer impact fee, maybe we start attacking some of this yellow stuff as now. But at least then it shows red ways, some impact and some movement with these ARPA funds. We start to see improvements to this city and start moving forward. Now, that's only 300,000 of the 740,000. I know in talking with Mr. Dukes, there's also an ARPA requirement that we have someone to manage the ARPA funds, if I'm correct on that overall.
Or is the recommendation?
Not a recommendation, but it is both an allowable expense. And the language suggests it does not require.
Well, maybe we look at that a little further because considering our recent, I'll say, and we're going to have a conversation on this later, analysis of the CRA in terms of operations, I'd rather be as squeaky clean as possible. So if we take 50,000 or 60,000 of that and allocate it for someone to manage the ARPA funds, which is an allowable expense, then we start putting the plan together for how we are actually going to use these ARPA funds as they come forward. That being said, 300,000, 360,000 minus 740,000 leaves $380,000 left. That gives us an ability to do sidewalks or whatever and maybe, like you said, bring that out of the general fund and really start analyzing how we can use all of these funds holistically and put together the complete list. Like I noticed you missed my sidewalks on Grant Avenue for analysis, but I won't go any further on that. But then we look at a complete list for the remainder of $380,000 from there and have that conversation.
No, if I may, I wanted to comment, first of all, I agree. First of all, I agree to have probably a part-time person to manage some of these projects makes sense and the money's certainly there for it from an administrative standpoint. Going back to, well, we don't want to pay anything off, which we can anyways, but the idea that we need to borrow money or we should be borrowing money moving forward, I, to me, that bothers me. The financial stability of the city is such that we shouldn't need to borrow money if we budget our money correctly. So there's really no reason to prepare or to plan on taking out bonds or borrowing money in the future when we have pools of cash here, money in reserves and, and our millage rate essentially, we have enough money coming in. The other thing that, that I disagree with is saying that, well, our staff should be the ones to, to put these projects in place. And the reason I suggest that is because when we're talking about a CIP project, we're not talking about just the here and now. We're talking about a five, 10-year plan moving forward. And, and I say this with all due respect, I don't think there's anyone in the city that has the educational background to, to look at holistically at our utilities and water and decide from the business perspective how to allocate money in the next 10 years and to balance that budget and to set the rates without having the study done. So to say we're going to earmark bits and pieces here and there before the study's done, I, I think the money would be better spent to have that holistic plan over the next 10 years and then take the money and say, okay, according to staff and experts, this is what they're recommending we need to do in the short term than the here and now. But I, I think having input from both as opposed to one versus the other would be helpful. That's, that was my point. And then, you know, I would like to go back to the drawing board as it relates to sidewalks and roads, which, which you commented on, because that money is strictly going to come out of general fund. It's going to hit our taxpayers and we certainly have plenty of areas where we need roadwork and sidewalks. And like I said, I, one of the bigger things sitting up here, we're coming into budget season and I'd love to get some of these projects done without having to utilize money moving forward out of our general fund balance. So I, I kind of wanted to get a list of those things that would ordinarily be probably coming up during budget season and put those on and have this on again for discussion as we come into budget season so we can budget some of those items that are, that are road or sidewalk projects or lighting projects that in large part come out of general fund balance.
How long would it take for experts to make an assessment of these projects?
Five years.
We budgeted that already, so I...
Yeah. Not how, not how much would it cost, how long? Like is, like six months down the road before we get a report or two months down? I mean, so we put in these projects off for a year because by the time you get a report from an expert and then you go into the planning of it and doing it, you're talking about a year and a half, two years down the road before you're addressing any of these sewer issues.
Right. We, we have a scope of work being developed for the rate study and CIP. I would expect to get that at any time. Once we have that in hand, probably another six weeks, two months to get a bid, get a contractor selected, probably another couple of months to actually do the study and get it done. We're not talking about pushing it off a year, but there's, it's already in progress.
So you already have it in progress to assess this list?
Yes. And as the mayor correctly pointed out, a rate study with a CIP, a capital improvement plan, the rate study would then address how do you fund these projects? What infrastructure do you need to replace in the next year, the next five years, the next 10 years? That's what we're going to ask a contractor to help us understand and put together. The, and the staff are not doing that. What the staff is, say, the Bem's Court Water Main is bad. We know it's bad. We work on it every week or two or three.
So we're going to continue to work on it every week or two or three for the next year and a half?
Right.
And the residents are going to have issues for the next year and a half?
Correct. But what we're going to ask of the experts is how do we fund those long-term improvements? Because the staff are telling us that pipe needs to be replaced, that lift station needs to be rehabilitated.
If I may, the scope of work will probably remain the same. Some yellows may turn red, some reds may turn yellow over the course. The elements are going to stay the same. We're going to have to do X, Y, Z over the course. I think the staff and the experts are both able to analyze and see, this is broken, this isn't broken. The, 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 the experts, the CIP, the, the report we're going to get is like a capital reserve report. It's going to say, okay, you have a 30-year plan of stuff you're going to have to do to this city. Every five years you're going to have to, every 10 years you're going to have to reline the mantle. I'm making up stuff. So overall, you're going to need a million dollars every year to do X, Y, Z. And this is the, or you're going to need 500,000 in year one, 800,000 in year two, 1.5 million in year three. This, and we recommend these rates be adjusted to, to accommodate a reserve to be maintained. And correct me if I'm wrong in stating any of this, but it all kind of works the same. We, we recommend a rate set at this to maintain this level of reserve across the 30 years of your capital or whatever duration that we, we stay 10 years, whatever it is. We might recommend these rates to maintain this capital structure to fix all of these elements across the next 10 years. So that, that's the way, that's the report we're going to get after six to eight months.
And, and part of that report is going to be set in water rates based on this cost.
Correct. And that, that's what sets the reserve fund to accommodate that. Now, if we spend money now and address some of these issues, all the experts are going to do is say, okay, well, this is all being done and funded in year zero. This is what you have to, so all we're doing is then resetting our water rates because we're addressing the funding needs from another source. So effectively, we may be keeping our, by spending 300,000 plus 500,000 of impact fees, you may be lowering your overall need of water rates over the next 10 years to affect that reserve fund. That's all we're doing. So the, the funding source just sets the water rates or whatever we, or sewer rates, as the case may be. We're, we're just moving money around and getting projects ahead in advance. If we can say now that, you know, we're going to take care of all of these red items, the experts then just take it off of their study. Now, they may say, well, you know, your Carolyn lift station really should have been red. Well, then that goes into the reserve study and then we just adjust accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I agree with all of that, but my issue is you have the utility fund, which is an enterprise fund, which is restricted. So that's not money we can spend on roads and sidewalks and lighting. We have to actually tax our citizens for that. Now, whether they pay a little bit more in water versus whether the millage rate is affected one way or the other is kind of what we're talking about. But the, the purpose of the utility fund is to, to charge what it actually costs to run the, run and maintain those items. Where your other fund balance, which is the general fund, which was just on where we're, we're trying to build that fund balance to get to the 30% reserves, that's affected by the ad valorem taxes and is unrestricted. We can spend that anywhere. So that's why it's my preference to try and spend the money on items that would ordinarily be unrestricted versus from a restricted fund balance, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, thank you. Now, where I, where I can see also, perhaps we want to look at, and here's where I'll probably get in trouble with some people, the water rates are also paid by people who are outside of city, not necessarily affected, affected by ad valorem. So if we do shift some of those funds to a utility restricted fund, we're getting people outside of the city to, now, they're serviced by the city.
County residents.
The county resident, but they pay part of that bill. So if that 600,000 were to perhaps come out of the utility fund, which I believe is a usable use for that, for the grant, you know, we could perhaps use that 600,000 out of the utility fund and use ARPA funds for something else. Again, we're just shifting money around, but in between the two sources legally, of course. And I know he's starting to think about it. I can already see him starting to think about it.
I'm not shy. I'm great.
But, but, but we do have options. I think for tonight's conversation, it may perhaps we all want to agree, let's kick this, anything we do do for the water rates to phase two and really analyze our list for phase one. I think we can all agree on that one, maybe. What do I know?
No, I agree because I'd like to bake in and have two separate lists. Stuff that would come out of the ad valorem of money moving forward and some stuff that would come out of the utilities. And then we can kind of analyze both lists and decide a, a, a balance on how we want to spend that money out of, that'll affect those two plots of money.
And maybe, again, if we're in October, I believe we're starting to get into our new fiscal year, maybe we look at the utility fund and can the utility fund actually pay that 600,000 if we were to get that grant and see how that works too?
Correct, because there's money in our utility fund.
Correct. Let's look at them all completely at a future date. Two weeks, John, we're on.
No, because it's, it's going to be an important discussion for the next budget season, which we're coming into.
I agree.
Did you have any, unless you wanted to add?
No, thank you. Thank you for answering my question.
And this was an on-action item, so we're not looking for a, it was...
So we talked for an hour on nothing.
No, it's important to kind of see what everyone wants to do.
That's correct. I'm looking for guidance in a sense of the council.
Thank you. I'm joking, I'm joking.
Understood.
If you guys are ready, we'll move on. There's only one last item on council business, which is item aid. It's a mutual aid MOU with Pasco County Fire Department. I was going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The existing MOU was agreed to in 1993, which you have in front of you, is something that our chief and Pasco County have worked on for quite some time. Modernizes, updates our memorandum of understanding with the county, how we respond, how they respond. It does implement an expectation of the closest unit being sent out. Chief and I have spent some time working through what that means internally, operationally. This is probably more of an impact on, on medical calls. Fire calls are going to have two units sent, structure fires, maybe more specific. Structure fires are going to have two units sent, which means one unit comes from Port Ritchie and one comes from one of our partners outside of Port Ritchie. So, but it's been 25 years or so and it's time to update our MOU with the county. What I would ask is a motion to approve the mayor to sign the MOU and send it back to
The only question I have is that this has been a long time since we've revisited this MOU. Were there any major changes from the 1993 version to what we have now?
The, I, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but I think the biggest change is that it does address dispatch sending closest units rather than a strict adherence to is this call happening in Port Ritchie or is it on the other side of the street, which is Pasco County? Rather than paying as much attention to the boundary lines, dispatchers are going to look at where's the closest unit to get to that call? Now, obviously, chief and I have talked about some constraints. We're not sending our units 20 miles east of here. It's going to be within, county uses zones, which is two, two and a half miles. And, you know, we, we've got a limited amount of resources. But there's also been a useful discussion on if we send a unit outside of Port Ritchie, the county's going to start moving units on the other side of the city towards the city, which is very common in disaster responses. When resources are getting low, you start moving in your mutual aid partners to start covering. So that's probably the biggest, kind of a modernization of how, how we're going to run calls. But it is, you know, personally, I think it's much more focused on the, the fact that we run a lot of medical calls compared to structure fires. I think we average about one structure fire per month. We run medical calls all day long. And so it's probably more of a, how are we going to staff the medical call response? And how is the county going to come help us? When we're on one call, they're going to backfill us on the other side. So, and in, in 1993, the call volumes were much lower than they are now. Probably still a 10 to one split between medical and, and fire response in total. But this helps give some guidance to how the services actually function now.
And here's my only concern with that is we have a small city. We have a small department that services our city really well. Really short response times were a couple minutes, not only with fire, but police. With the county is a different issue. The county, their response times and their stations are pretty far away and their response times are not near where we are. My concern is, is I don't want to be funding services for the, for the county because they haven't funded where our lines are, where we're running 50 calls for the county for every 10 for ours, we shouldn't be paying for the county service. So that's my concern. And one of the things that I look at very closely, and the police department does a very nice job as they put their monthly reports out, is they put all their calls. But those calls break down which ones are citizens versus which are calls outside. If there's a shooting somewhere, you know, in, in the county that's nearby, we respond and obviously we help out. But those are very well documented in the, our police department's logs, as I see them every month. I see those calls that go outside. But I think that we need to be cognizant, especially since we've just raised the budget by several fire department employees last year, you know, I really am concerned. As much as I don't have a problem with an emergency situation, you know, going to the county, you know, I, I don't think that we should be compensating for the county not making calls as quickly in this area because of their funding issues and using our citizens' taxpayers to compensate into the county. So that's my concern. That having been said, I, if we do this, I just wanted to break down every month like the police department does, to track those calls, to see what we're paying for outside services, which are county residents versus what we're using for own citizens. And that would be my request if, if we pass this MOU.
Are we currently offering mutual aid right now with the county? I mean, that's, that's a current practice.
Well, it's not in writing, but yes.
And do we respond quite often outside the city limits?
I think currently it's one a day on the average. Some days three, some days none, but currently it's about one a day. I think that the biggest change...
The biggest change since 1993, like Mr. Duke was talking about, was that in 1993, it was a phone call and a dispatcher looking at a map, trying to figure out what, you know, what truck was closer. Now everything's electronic, everything's on a computer screen. So dispatchers have to knowingly look and look at a dot and say, okay, well, pick and choose which addresses, get which fire trucks based off of the address and the name on the side versus who's the closest emergency responder to the emergency. The map that's included when you look at it, really it's a couple of scraggler streets that are in and around the city. As we all know, there's spots in the city that one of our city residents can walk across street with their neighbor for poker night, be choking on something and our fire truck would never go because it's a county territory address. Truck from Embassy or the truck from Little in Massachusetts would be responding to it because it's a county address instead of sending the closest emergency responder to the location. So now it's all computerized, so they can see that, but they have to manually disregard it because of those boundaries.
But our current practice, we still respond?
If we know. That's the problem. They're, they're trained to know that city sent it to the city and we're trained to know that county sent it to the county. To where this makes it automatic across the board. They're going to help us, we're going to help them. Whatever is the closest truck to the emergency will go to the call for assistance.
And is this similar to what we have with Newport Ritchie?
Yes. That makes it across the board.
And Newport Ritchie, are they, they have mutual aid with the county as well?
No.
Are you aware of...
No, they don't have the same computer system. So the dispatchers, they look, they're actually ignoring our fire truck or we're have to ignore their fire truck and just send based off the, the mapping and the jurisdiction. So Newport Ritchie has a different CAD system. They're hoping to upgrade, but they're still having their, you know, vegetarian issues. So really this, what this does is this makes what we had talked about and what we're kind of doing automatic across the board, where there's no thinking and there's no jurisdictional boundary. It's the closest truck gets to the emergency. Like Mr. Duke said, we had many conversations about it and we were concerned about coverage and this and that. So let's just say there's a house fire one street out of our jurisdiction. Well, that's going to be a, it's a county call, but we could be tied up for an hour or two, you know, helping with this, you know, fire. That's when they're, it's in there for them to backfill our station if we're at that location assisting for extended period of time. Order rescues, I mean, we get called for special... Or the rescues, I mean, we get called for special rescues, same kind of scenario. So it's kind of what we're doing already, but it puts it in writing, makes it a standard. And to update, something you had mentioned before too, is with this in writing now, we're automatic with Newport Ritchie and we're semi-automatic with the county. This makes it automatic with the county. So now every house fire will actually get three fire trucks and an ambulance with the site because the county's going to be sending one automatically as well.
And to clarify, don't we already get additional fire trucks for, for structure fires, we already get two or three trucks?
We just get one from Newport Ritchie.
The county never comes to help us with structure fires?
We'd have to, we'd have to get on the radio and request them. This makes it automatic.
Okay. But I guess, I guess I want to flesh out the concern that the county fire stations are pretty far removed from the city compared to where ours are compared to our citizens. And for me, my understanding of mutual aid is really as a smaller entity, the county should be helping us, not where we're taking a small pot of money from a very small amount of people and helping them, okay? So that's my concern with the MOU. I don't think we should be running 40 or 50 calls up 19 because Embassy Station can't get to it, into the county around the mall. I just disagree with that. Now, when it comes to structure fires, that's a whole different issue. But we're talking about the bulk of these calls are, there's a car accident, there's someone injured in the car accident, and the county's taking longer to get to than we would because of how they allocate their resources. I don't want our citizens paying for all those calls up and down 19. So that's what, the problem that I have with this MOU. If it was more specific to fire rescue and structure fires, I would be 100% for this. If it's for every car accident up and down 19 and we're going to beat the Embassy Station north of us or the other county station south of us, then I don't agree with this because I think it's an unfair burden on our taxpayers.
I have a problem in the fact that it's, our fire personnel are CPR, BLS certified. If, I travel in around Port Ritchie and surrounding areas, so I could be out, many years ago, I did CPR on Ridge Road, many years ago. And it literally took, while I was doing CPR, so you know, it seemed like three hours, but it wasn't. But I'm sure Port Ritchie could have responded because it wasn't, it was just up the road, just past the line. It was in county. It could have been, if we had Port Ritchie that could have responded to that 18-year-old, probably wouldn't have changed anything, but what if it could happen? So I kind of have, I understand what you're saying. I don't want them going up to Jasmine, I understand that. And is, the map is where you would kind of be called to, is that correct? Is that what you said? The map that was in here?
Yeah, the map is listing the streets that are dotted throughout the city that we'd be automatic response to.
So is it, and what's that, what's that, what do you call it?
Sorry?
Is it like within a half a mile of our city or?
Oh, those are all really, they're bordering or really within our city when you look at the map.
Okay.
Some of them, they're either right behind it, right aboard, right along Washington and along Congress Bridge.
Right.
Really, the whole thing, when you look at the map, I'm just going to take a, throw a number out here.
Okay.
30 streets.
So that yellow area?
The white, yeah, the white, well, I'm sorry, mine's in black and white, but yes.
Okay.
So those streets.
So just this yellow area in this map, you take it out?
Yes, yes.
That's the only thing you would be responding to that is not Port Ritchie?
That's the automatic response in that area, yes.
So you wouldn't be going to the mall?
Well, I mean, if we're called to go on mutual aid, we would go.
But that would be, how many times have you been called to the mall in just six months, do you think? I know you don't have it in front of you, so.
Like I said, we're probably averaging one a day. I think that was the last statistic I got from Tom, was one a day on an average, and some days three, some days we go two, three days with none. And this also, again, stipulates that the county, they're driving through our city all the time. So the county's engine is driving through and we're at the station or we're out at, out by the water and there's a heart attack right over here and the county engine's driving by, they're not going to ignore that call. They're going to stop and they're going to come into the city and they're going to assist us. But again, they're driving through our jurisdiction every day. The problem with it, to me, if we start saying, we're going to go to your house fire, but we're not going to go to the medical call, it makes me feel like hypocrite because then I'm trying to say that, well, the house fire is important, but your child drowning isn't. So that's where it gets to be a problem.
Well, I get, and I'm not suggesting that those are legit emergencies, but the question is whether or not we should be paying for the county shortages and I, that's the concern. And, you know, like I said, you're saying, let's say, for example, you run three calls out of the jurisdiction of 19. That means if one of our citizens calls, there's a longer response time. And I don't think that's fair to our citizens. And that's the issue that I have with it. So in the old MOU, we still did, we still did mutual aid, it was just by call when help is needed, which I like. If there's really a need and they call you and you go, help, that's different, then it's just automatic, we're going to start dispatching into the county. And that's the part that I disagree with.
But like right now, if any of our, if you could walk out of here and go over to O'Reilly Auto Parts and start choking, hold your breath. I could be there in 30 seconds if I know, but I don't know. And we're not dispatched because they're told not to send us. So we don't go. So this could be a city resident going one piece of grass over to the other address and we wouldn't respond to those because the CAD is telling them, because we tell the CAD, we, meaning dispatchers and agencies, tell the CAD not to recommend that unit. So it's talking about closest, sending the closest emergency unit to the closest 911 call. So the resident asking, I'm not trying to differentiate a house fire from a medical call, from a brush fire, it's, there's somebody laying on the ground calling 911. It's, to me, it's hypocritical for us not to go if we're closer and it's hypocritical for the county not to go if they're closer. Again, it's, yes, something that we've been doing across the board, but it hasn't been automatic. It hasn't been automatic because we didn't have computers back in 1993. Now we have computers and they can see where everybody is. So right now, if this was in place and somebody was choking right there, I would get notified. We would get notified and we would be there.
No, I get it. And I guess the comparison I'm making is if the police department did the same, our police department would have taken 150 domestic calls up in the neighborhood north of us off 19. And that's not really what our taxpayers should be paying for, whether it's police or fire rescue. So that's my concern. You know, I get that, yeah, we can provide probably better service than what the county is in the surrounding areas. The issue is whether or not our citizens should be paying for it. And that's my problem with it. Now, if they call and they say, we want help, we have a citizen that's in the O'Reilly Auto Parts place and they call us, then you go, you know, and that's the way it's set up now. And I like the way it's set up now, that's why I'm hesitant.
That's the problem with it, is they're not going to call and we're sitting there and you can see it on the computer. So it's being, it has to be ignored.
I'm not suggesting it ignored.
Well, that's what I'm telling you, that's the way it's set up.
They have to, because they can't go unless Pasco County calls them. They can't look at it and say, oh, let's go help them out, they're right next door. Is that correct, Eric?
Yes, they're not going to step on our feet, we don't want to step on their feet.
They have to be called.
It has to be, right now, they have to request us.
So you never call over there, you either just go or don't, depending on their request?
I don't get it.
In other words, if you see it on the computer that there's a structure fire a block from the city, you don't call over and say, do you need an extra engine? You just wait for them to call you?
That's the way it's set up.
Okay.
They have to request us.
Can you put on your monthly report how many times you go outside of the city?
Of course.
As Scott said that.
Of course.
Can you put that on?
Yep, we can just pre, pre-early report and put a code and take a look at it. And at any point in time, just.
And how far out, you know, like how far? You know what I mean, like, do you have to go up to Jasmine or?
That might be a little more complicated. I mean, to actually give a mileage distance to where we were, but we can give you statistics on how often, or how often we're going out.
Just a percentage breakdown on which we're all cars and which we're outside. That's all I was looking for, so we know. If 30%, 40% of the calls are outside the jurisdiction, you know, I would want to go back to the old MOU. If it's 5 or 10%, you know, then that may be a different issue.
I think being medically professional, knowing that if somebody's having a heart attack, time is money. And the people who look around, that could be the difference of someone living or dying, whether it's a city resident or not a city resident, that we're all residents of something. So I think, I'm in favor of this. I think this should go ahead because it's about the people and whether you're a city resident or not, I think we should, time is money, in part muscle, somebody dying. As a nurse, I'm going to stop whether, whatever it is. And I think that's where the fire department is, they're CPR certified, and I think they should respond if appropriate, if appropriate. Because the county will respond if our guys are tied up, the county will respond when I'm having a heart attack and say, time is.
This is in place all over the country.
I have a question, a couple of general questions. One, our citizens pay Pasco County taxes. Those Pasco County taxes support their fire department, Pasco County Fire Department. So theoretically, from the way I view it, Pasco County should be responding regardless to, well, let me finish. They should, they should be responding regardless of city boundaries. If, they should always be coming into the city no matter what, not when we call, they should be responding.
They do.
Our citizens then pay a premium for a shortened response time. I think my first question is, what is our current average response time to a call utilizing city of Port Ritchie personnel or our current agreement?
I don't have the exact number, but I would say three to four minutes.
Okay, perfect. So they pay a premium on their taxes for a four-minute response time. Let's use four minutes for that. Pasco County, what is their average response time?
Depending, because there's so areas that are like, Embassy has a short response time, it's a very tight, you know, populated area. And then you have areas of big city in San Antonio that 10 or 12-minute response time's normal. So to ask what their average response time is.
I, let me rephrase the question. The average response time around our city. The area that would be affected under this agreement?
I would say four to five minutes.
Okay, so essentially, you're getting half the response time or 60% better response time within the city of Port Ritchie outside. And the reason I'm saying that, they have a certain density. You have two engines for, and three firemen for 3,600 residents. What is the response of Pasco County? And the reason I'm answering that, if they say, well, we have two engines and three firefighters for 7,200 residents, by the very nature, you're going to be going out of city more than they're coming into city. Just doing statistics on it. That's my concern. If we're now sending you guys out, and I, believe me, I appreciate and understand you wanting to side blocks. I have, you know, don't take my comments wrong, I look at things from a more business perspective. I look at, what is our response time? What are our citizens losing that they are paying taxes for? And to say from a business perspective, let's take lives out of it, let's say, pretend you're all rescuing cats or dogs or whatever. If our citizens with this agreement now lose response time, lose that cherished four minutes that they're spending extra money for, and it goes to a six minute, we've lost in terms of a citizen. Now we're being more like Pasco County. Why should our citizens now pay a premium to be more like Pasco County in terms of response? I understand and respect saving lives.
For medical calls, not structure fires, for medical calls, medical calls, Port Ritchie will respond, I call 911, done it. Two years ago when I was laying in the street, call 911, fire rescue came, and two minutes later, Pasco County ambulance showed up. So Pas, what is a medical call? Pasco ambulance does show up.
Oh, yes. So that is a standard.
If I call for a medical call, they come. If I do not want an ambulance call, then I call the non-emergency number, done that many times, the non-emergency number, fire rescue will come out and help me with my problem. And fire, and fire, Pasco County rescue does not come because I called the non-emergency number. But Pasco County always sells an ambulance when you do a medical emergency on 911.
They are the only ALS.
They don't have the ambulance.
We don't have an ambulance. So they have to go to every emergency call.
So we're paying for that service too, though.
Yes, you are. We are.
Yeah, we're paying for it.
You're just talking about paying county taxes for county services. We get county stuff on every medical call.
So just from my own clarity then, from what I'm hearing, this is primarily now just associated with fire, structure fire or non-emergency numbers because medical emergencies are automatically being responded to regardless. Am I right in stating that?
Say it one more time, I'm sorry.
Medical emergencies are already being responded to by Pasco County regardless of the situation.
And if you read the 93 MOU, it only says for emergency services, it doesn't say anything about fire. So this is a brand-new MOU as it relates to fire services.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to get at. This, we're only really talking about fire in this case.
In this contract?
Yeah.
No, it's 911 calls.
I'm confused.
It's about.
Here's, yes, it's about 911. When somebody calls 911, a county has, if they have an ALS, they're a COPCN provider, meaning that they are mandated, they are the only ones that can provide advanced life support services and transport. We don't, we don't have a transport, so we can't transport patients. So reality is, we don't even have to go to a medical call. When people are calling 911 for a medical emergency, they're calling for an ambulance, they're not calling for a fire truck.
Okay.
Okay, the fire truck goes to assist the ambulance, especially on critical calls. The cities choose to send the fire trucks to all the 911 calls to make sure that we're getting there and rendering assistance as soon as fast as we can. So again, we don't even have to go to medical calls, it's the call is for medical, is for a 911, for an ambulance to come take me to the hospital. And then the fire truck show up to support that mission. A lot of the times, if it's a critical patient like she had ran into, there's only two guys on an ambulance. So to effectively treat and transport the patient, you have to have three or four people. Somebody's got to drive, CPR in general. So again, those engines are sent to supplement, to supplement those services, to make sure that the ambulances have the manpower that they need to get the people there. So there's, it's twofold. One, to get somebody, anybody there as fast as possible to render aid. And two, to make sure that we have enough manpower on the scene to get that patient to the hospital safely and effectively. So fire calls are under mutual aid contracts because the more fire trucks you have, it just means the more liabilities that you have to protect. Any agency can become overwhelmed at any time. So mutual aid contracts are there to assist each other. Look at Miami, one building, you know how many fire stations have in Miami? One building burned down, fell down and people came from all over the state to assist them. So mutual aid's there because of that reason. Automatic mutual aid is now because CAD systems are prevalent in most all modern 911 systems and they're recognizing Pinellas County. They don't even have jurisdictional boundaries. It's the closest truck goes. I don't care if Tarpon Springs was coming to Bayonet to pick up one of their firefighters from a trauma alert, you know, and they're bringing their firefighter back and a Tarpon Springs fire truck's driving by, in Pinellas County, they just look and it's the closest dock goes to the closest emergency. And that's kind of the way it works.
Can I ask, there's never been, I was looking at the 93 MOU, fire services aren't in there at all, but we still run calls outside the city, even though there's not a formal MOU if they request help, correct?
If they request help.
Okay.
Request has to be made, this makes the response automatic.
So from my standpoint, there's not a whole lot of structure fires, either in our jurisdiction or around this, so I don't have a problem because there's a very small amount of calls that are structure fires. Are a fire truck going to help with the towering inferno in the county nearby? You know, I think that's appropriate. But what I don't want is our fire truck running up and down 19 outside the district three times a day impacting the service to our citizens. So in terms of providing mutual aid to structure fire calls, I don't have a problem with that because they're far and few between. But in terms of the accidents, you know, I think statistically, you have one a day. So that ties it up for a long period of time. And if you can't differentiate, I like the old MOU better because it keeps city resources within the city. That's just my personal opinion on that.
Asking, I know you, the fire department has been fielding an increased number of calls over the past five years. I believe you doubled and then doubled again, if I'm correct. I'm right. At some point, your resources are going to be stretched to the point that you're not going to be able to service that either within the city or without. What my concern is, in the area that you would then be, I'll say, responsible for, what impact does that have on your, that number that we have? Like, let's say you field, you know, 180 calls a month, I believe that's what your latest report says, something along those lines. What is your breaking point? Is it 250 calls a month, in which case you need another fire truck and more people, more whatever to service that? And does this agreement push you to that breaking point or does it aid that breaking point?
For me, it aids that breaking point because it makes the response automatic. I don't have to worry about having a resource available for the next call. The next call's gonna be automatically dispatched.
So, yeah, but here's, here's the density issue that I was getting to earlier. You're, you're two engines, three people for thirty-six hundred residents. If the county is the same thing for ten thousand residents, you're gonna be fielding more calls outside of the county than they are fielding within the county.
I don't quite understand what you're asking.
You have a hundred and eighty calls per month, right now, for thirty-eight hundred residents, serviced by two engines, three firefighters, rough numbers. If you now increase that range, and, and, so that's your density and that's your calls per month. If the county has three, two engines, three firefighters for ten thousand residents, arguably, they have more calls per month. That is what is impacting their slower response time, the four minutes to the seven minutes. What I'm trying to get at is, I don't want to push you guys to the breaking point, i.e. that two hundred and fifty calls or that magic number, where now the entire area is at six or seven minutes response time. Now we've actually hurt our citizens by this agreement, as opposed to just letting it go as it currently is, and, you know, we maintain our, because at some point, this county, this, this city's gonna get dense enough where you're gonna come to, before council, and say, I need another fire truck, I need two more people, because we're now, you know, before we, when we first started, we were at a hundred and eighty calls a month, and now we're at three hundred and sixty calls a month, or whatever that number is. And we're gonna argue and say, why are we spending all this money? And how did this get this dense? And where is all that? I don't want to have this, that, that equation occur because of an agreement that now puts you at that breaking point.
The other issue to address is, if our department has an ISO rating, and that rating is much lower than the county because of our response times, and because of that increased service. And if we expand that area, it's gonna have collateral consequences that'll affect, you know, even those types of things where your, you know, citizens' taxes are going up because of the, or not taxes, uh, insurance is gonna go up because of the ISO rating changing because of our expanded area. So between the collateral consequences and some of the other issues at hand, I, you know, I just, I think there's just too much to it to agree to.
That's not a true statement, our ISO ratings are the same. As a matter of fact, by executing the agreement, it automatically adds manpower and trucks to our assignments, and could very well assist our, because they look at an effective firefighting force. They look at, how many people are you gonna get on the scene? They don't care the name or the size of the truck. How many people are you gonna get on the scene within so many minutes of a house fire, of a small house fire, of a bigger house fire, and of a commercial building? So they look at an effective firefighting force. If you look right now, um, with disagreements and without disagreement, the way it is, it's us and Port Ritchie. So it's three guys, three guys and me. So we have seven people going to a house fire.
And the county's coming either way, we pay county taxes, they're coming too, either way.
Not automatically, we have to request that.
In North City, they should be...
But what I'm saying is, ISO doesn't go by requesting mutual aid. It's automatic, it has to be built in automatically.
Then we should automatically call them for a request every time we have a house fire.
That's what this does.
Well, no, we should do it anyway. Our policy is, we call the county and get some of our taxpayer money back, but we don't have to go out of city.
But my point is, if we're running calls for non-fires, in other words, we're running a bunch of calls up and down nineteen, it's gonna affect our response times, which will affect our ISO. So that, that's, those are things that I have a concern with. And because of that, I, like I said, I prefer the old agreement at this point.
Conceptually, I'm not against a new agreement, but I want some kind of a security that our citizens are not gonna be negatively affected by this agreement, in terms of response. I, I understand what it could and should, and it should, and they should come, and, you know, but I wanna see, well, this is the density out of the county, this is the density within the county of your fires, this is the number of calls they take, this is the number of calls we take. If they're taking three hundred and sixty calls in their area, and you're taking a hundred and eighty calls in your area, your calls are gonna have to go up. You know, if the densities are, you're gonna be going out more than you're, they're coming in. Or prove me wrong, say, no, you know, Todd, you know, their density's less than ours, and, or, or, yeah, less than ours, and they field less calls, and there's gonna be more trucks come in. That's, that's an argument I wanna see, to me, before I say, yeah, you can go out of state, or out of, out of city.
At the end of the day, I mean, this is for you guys to decide on what you want your, your, you know, fire department to do, and I'm here to support that. Uh, it's just my job to make sure I'm bringing you the information that we have. And again, I'm not the decision maker, I'm the one that gets it taken care of whenever you decide on what you want.
And believe me, I appreciate your, I appreciate your, your wanting to save lives, I appreciate it all. I'm just looking at, our, our citizens pay for a benefit that is more than what they get in the county. I just wanna make sure I don't jeopardize that benefit by an agreement. And I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from, believe me.
I think you can check with Mr. Matthew. I think at any point in time, you wanna change, retract, or alter this agreement, it's not like it's set in stone, ever.
Ninety days to cancel, that's correct.
So my problem, again, my biggest issue is we're hopscotching with fire trucks. We're sitting in the station, and fire trucks are driving by right past our fire station to go to streets. When you look at that map, again, it's, again, thirty, there's thirty streets right along the border of the city that are immediately affected. Um, so my...
Then those people have an incentive to wanna be acclimated within the city and pay city taxes too. I get that.
But it's also city residents that are there. So again, I'm just bringing you the information on what's happening in real life, and I...
I, I understand, but, look, I understand if I go out into Hudson or wherever and have a heart attack or flop over, I'm not gonna get four-minute response times, so that's why I go to Walmart. I, I mean...
Don't go to O'Reilly's either.
Yeah.
I, I, again, but I understand that argument, and I can appreciate you watching someone having an issue and you can't go. I understand that. But to the same extent, I pay more money than Pasco County for that benefit of me calling you and you being four minutes away versus seven minutes away. I wanna make sure I don't jeopardize that.
Okay, with that, if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. You're gonna tell me you won't jeopardize that?
So we, we provide two primary services. We provide structure fire suppression. We go fight structure fires. And we do that with Newport Ritchie and/or Pasco County. We don't fight structure fires by ourselves. So whether it's automatic or we have to ask for it, that's a service we provide, we're gonna have to have help to do it. The other service that we provide is first response. And that comes in two categories, medical and trauma. That's a very different service than fire suppression. We don't transport, we send personnel and machinery, and we assist the county in dealing with a medical or trauma patient. We can, there are measurements that we can provide, location of call, uh, as Chief said. The other one we can provide is response time. Both our initial response time and a response time on a second-out call. So when our personnel are busy on a call, what's the response time in the city for the next call? And that's, that's the main, that's where the break is. I don't care if you run, I worked for a fire department that ran a hundred and seventy thousand calls a year. There were times we were busy and there were times we weren't. But you're always busy when the second-out call comes. That's the one that, you know, are your people getting their money's worth? And we can provide those numbers, and in ninety days, if you don't like the numbers, we can go back to the drawing board, or go back to the ninety-three agreement, or come up with something else. But there, there's ways to measure this that give all of you the information you need to say, it's, it's what we want or it isn't. And it, you know, Chief and I can work on making sure those numbers are accurate, and you've got the matrices that you want to, to do your decision-making. But you have to be careful that you're not comparing apples to oranges. And what we do on a medical call is very different than what we do on a fire suppression call. It's a different skill set, you know, the response time isn't gonna be any different, same distance from the station to the call. But the service that's provided and what's needed on the call. If we're taking, you know, if we're doing medical first response on a stub tow, that's very different in manpower and machinery than if we're going to a commercial structure fire. So this is all really difficult stuff to measure and come to good legislative and administrative decisions. But we can get you the measurements that at least get you started, and if it's not satisfactory, then, you know, we can go back to the drawing board.
I, I got a great idea. Put together for the next meeting, when you're doing all the other stuff that you have two weeks to do. Why don't we analyze our current response times and our secondary call response times? A list of, you know, I respond four minutes the first time, and seven minutes if we're busy, or whatever the case is. Take an analysis, and I understand it's a best guess. What would be the impact of this agreement? What gets reduced and/or improved by that? Just based on what you can from calls and analysis, and looking at the, the, the data that you have available to you. We can then analyze it, as, I'm presuming that it would be a benefit overall, but let's go under the presumption that that analysis will be a benefit. We then can then implement this agreement, assuming that's a benefit of, of the analysis, and then measure it for six months. If the case study equals the benefit, then fine, we stay with the agreement. If the case study does not equal the outcome, then we can revert back to the original agreement.
My thought was along those lines, but it's slightly different. I'd prefer to order county records to figure out how many times our units would have responded, and then put in a percentage-based amount of how many calls we would have taken outside the city versus inside the city, um, and work backwards from there.
Yeah, I, I mean, part of that proposed analysis should include, absolutely include it. This is, this is what we think is going to happen.
Granted, you're guessing, I under, I understand that.
But it should be an educated guess to that effect. Because I wanna be able to show the citizens, or tell the citizens, you know, from what we're looking at, it looks like a benefit. We're gonna analyze it, we're gonna let it go, it's a case study. If it doesn't work, we're going back to the old system, because then we have the data to go against our, our case study, or our proposed thing.
But, but I, I wouldn't vote for this until we have that data showing that there's some benefit to our...
I agree, yeah. No, I, I, I think that, I think there should be a proposal. This is our current things, this is what we think will happen if we were to implement this program. And then we have to study against that proposed. Assuming the proposed is better than the current. If the proposed isn't better than the current, then don't even bother bringing up the case study, or the agreement, because it does work. But I'm assuming the fact you have it in front of me, you think the, the proposed will be better than the current?
I mean, it's gonna be hard to judge without, I mean, the main statistic you're looking for is how often we would be tied up, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, we'd be tied up on a call where that secondary response would take place. Like, when you had mentioned, uh, you're, you're okay with us responding out and helping on structure fires. The reality is, the structure fires are two or three hour call that we're committed on. And so we're having zero response within the city for two to three hours, where they have to cover it, where a medical call is eight to fifteen minutes.
But we already, we already do the structure fires. I can't imagine a structure fire nearby that we wouldn't go to, even if it's outside, correct?
On request?
Yes, of course.
And we better be requesting every Pasco County thing on a new structure fire, because we pay for it.
I mean, that...
But my point is, the old MOU already covers a lot of this. So that's why I, you know, I, without, without some statistics, that's the same. But this is an action item, there's other council people here. So the floor is still open for you, for a motion, um, to pass it, a motion to not pass it, or a motion to, um, to, to set this off. So, you know, and, and once there's a motion and a second, I'll, I'll address the, the general public with, with whatever the motion is. So at this point, I'd like to open it for a motion and a potential second.
I'll motion to set aside until we get the information requested that I set forth. For the current response time, including secondary response time, the proposed impacts of this agreement to those, and then the plan for the analysis against the proposed, or the, the estimated impact.
We have a motion, is there a second on the table? Hearing no second, that motion dies, and we open the table for any other motions and/or discussion at this point.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Mayor to sign this MOU.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Before we put it to a vote, I'd like to invite anyone from the public to speak on this issue. Oh, Chuck, come on up, welcome.
First time hearing all this stuff. And I agree with both Scott and, and, uh...
Todd.
We are, we pay taxes, we pay for the county fire, and we're paying for our city fire. We miss our taxes, is that correct? We pay two times. We have a good fire department. If we're gonna be running more calls, I don't care if they're medical or whatever, it's gonna be probably more personnel, and it's definitely gonna be more wear and tear on our equipment. So we're gonna need to do trucks too. We're gonna need them more often than we currently do. So is there a way to have a percentage of, keep track of what's percentage we're doing for the county, and get reimbursed from the county when we come to our budget? I mean, get reimbursed for the number of calls? If twenty-five percent of our calls are the county, and our budget is a million dollars, let them pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the city for our, you know, our work that we're doing for. Otherwise, maybe let our, let our, our fire department and the county, it'll still be right here. They're gonna get a still response time, but the county paying for it, and we'll be paying one tax instead of two taxes. So combine our, our, our department with the county, or get reimbursed from the county for what we do for the county. Make sure we remember we have to buy new equipment.
Thank you, I appreciate your input. Mr. Mueller, come on up.
Dave Mueller, five-four-three-nine, Blue Point Drive. A couple of concerns. One, is there any chargeback related to this MOU between county and city? Don't know if there is. If that, if there isn't, one of the next things that needs to be addressed is where are we at today? Which I think Todd illustrated that, hey, we need to see what those calls are today, and then try to ladle in what this particular MOU brings to the table. Does it go up, down, or stay the same? So what we're looking for is what that delta's gonna be between where we're at today with our current response, future response, and then how does that impact the city? I think Todd pretty much laid that out. I think that's just gonna provide better understanding of the impacts of this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Say no hands, if there's no further discussion, I think we'll put it to a vote. All in favor of passing the MOU?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
It's two-two, so I think the motion fails at this time. Unless there's any further motions, I think that closes out business. With that, we'll move on to old business. I'm gonna start to my left with Mr. Rodriguez.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I have no old business.
I would.
And I have none.
Okay, with that, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A five-minute break, we're coming back.